Into order. The Orange County Schools Board of Education pledges to our families, students, staff, and the greater community to conduct our business in a courteous and productive manner, showing respect for fellow board members, staff, and citizens. The Board asks that citizens to conduct themselves with the same courtesy towards all staff members and each other. As per Board policy, Robert's rules of order will be used to conduct meetings, and a moment of silence will be observed before we begin our business. Public comment will be held tonight after the Board adopts its agenda. Tonight, we'll begin our time together by acknowledging that Orange County Schools educates our students on the traditional land of the Okanichi Band of the Saponi Nation. Hillsborough and its surrounding areas have a difficult history of colonization, slavery, segregation, and is still grappling with the detrimental effects of racism. I want to recognize that residents on this land, over time, have experienced human atrocities, destructive hurricanes and floods, the flu pandemic of 1918, and many periods of civil unrest. I invite everyone into our humanity as we face the challenges of this school year in the midst of the coronavirus pandemic. This crisis transcends the school district and will require new solutions, generosity of spirit, and deep concern for our neighbors. As we consider our individual roles in helping to meet the needs of every student and family in our district, we will have a moment of silence as we begin our work. Thank you. Tonight, we will be recognizing our Beginning Teacher of the Year, as well as our Special Education Teacher of Excellence, Dr. Felder. I will turn it over to you.
Well, good evening, Mrs. McKenzie and to the Board. Yes, we are very excited tonight to recognize very special staff. And at this time, I'm going to turn things over to Ms. Cunningham-Brown.
Good evening, Orange County Board. This summer, I'm going to take over for Beginning Teacher of the Year. Hopefully, you can all hear me at this time. So, good evening, Orange County Board of Education. Tonight, I have the pleasure of announcing the Orange County Beginning Teacher of the Year. The Beginning Teacher of the Year is a statewide recognition program for teachers who have completed their first year of teaching. The criteria for Beginning Teacher of the Year are as follows. Successful completion of the first year of teaching in a North Carolina public school. Continued employment in the same school district or charter school for a second year. Must teach at least 70% of the time. And of course, excellent in teaching and leadership in their first year of teaching. Mentors, coaches, principals, and assistant principals are eligible to nominate Beginning Teachers. Each nominee participated in a portfolio process that consisted of recommendations, an essay, a professional topics, as well as a video. The field was then narrowed from 13 candidates to three finalists by our district committee. Talents also participated in an interview process. I am very pleased, on behalf of Orange County District, to announce that Ms. Antonio Kolski-Oski will represent Orange County as our Beginning Teacher of the Year. Ms. Tony, as the kids call her, is in her second year of teaching as an EC teacher at Gravely Hill Middle School. She graduated from Appalachian University with a degree in elementary education and special education. I would like to share just a few quotes that were shared with the committee during our selection process. "Just as adults long for independence and self-worth, so do our young humans. If we create an environment that is safe enough to make mistakes without ridicule, patient enough to find the most accessible learning path, and encouraging enough to try something new, our students will flourish." Going into my first year, I knew building positive relationships was a crucial part of being a teacher. But I didn't fully understand the impact until a particular student and I were sporting matching tears at our drive-through graduation ceremony. On behalf of the entire Orange County School District, we'd like to say congratulations to Ms. Tony. You make us all proud. Ms. Tony will go on to represent the Orange County Schools in the statewide NCCAT Beginning Teacher of the Year competition. And I do believe Ms. Tony is listening. I'm not sure that she can respond, but she definitely is in the audience listening.
Congratulations, Ms. Tony. The Board is so appreciative of your service.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am here today to present the Teacher of Excellence for 2020-2021 school year. Each year, at the Special Education Conference in November, each district, a teacher to represent their district, the Teacher of Excellence. This year, our Teacher of Excellence for the Special Education Department is Mrs. Nicole Lester. Ms. Lester has been teaching for 16 years, nine of those in Orange County schools. She is a special education teacher and the department chair at AL Stand Back Middle School. She teaches in a class of students with complex and multiple disabilities. Each one of the persons are very unique in their very own way. Nicole is, or Ms. Lester, has always been an incredibly strong advocate for her students, always pushing herself, her colleagues, and her students for the best. Since the school closure in November, or in March, Ms. Lester has risen above and beyond anything that I could have imagined for her and for her students. She approached each student individually. She developed individual plans for her student. Can everyone still hear me? I'm having network issues.
We can hear you just great. Ms. Cremmons, can you hear us? Let's give her a moment to try to reconnect. I'm sorry, your recognition is being interrupted, Ms. Lester. We're so excited for you. Congratulations.
In the world of special ed, you have to just roll with whatever happens. This is my life. It's fine.
Ms. McKenzie, am I okay saying a few words?
Oh, I would love that, Dr. Rafferty.
I know she's calling in. We see you, Connie. I can take care of it. Ms. Lester, we had the opportunity to recognize her during our staff meeting. I really wish I could have videotaped that for you. Just to hear the sincerity, the amount of love, the amount of respect as an educator, as a colleague, that she has, just, it really inspired me. She is an outstanding leader in our district, in our school. She's an advocate for our students constantly, and will remind me if we're not all advocates for our children at the drop of a hat. She is completely student-centered and really focused in on building relationships with families. One of the things that I love most about her is the way that she really looks at developing the whole child, that it's not just getting this skill or that skill, but it's the combination of skills, and even the social-emotional skills, that make up the type of student we want in Orange County. And she just does a phenomenal job. We totally appreciate her, and it's just an honor to have her at our... See, I get the clap for real, the quiet clap for Nicole.
Thanks, Mr. Rockland and Ms. Cremmons. Ms. Cremmons, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
I just wanted to say that Nicole really stepped up and met the students during school closure. She has become a leader for her colleagues. And I think that is what has really shown to me in the past six months that that leadership component, and making sure that not just her students, but all students who access one of our separate settings, have the best that they can. So, kudos to you, Nicole. I could not be more proud. And I want to give a shout out to Ms. Tony, also a part of the EC department. Thank you both very, very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cremmons. Thank you, Ms. Lester and Ms. Tony. You all make it all possible. You're on the front lines. We're so grateful, and we just appreciate your dedicated service. Dr. Felder, are there any other recognitions this evening? Okay.
That would be it for this evening, but thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Then I will have, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda tonight?
Yes, a motion to approve the agenda with pulling the minutes from the consent agenda?
Wouldn't we do that when we approve or adopt the consent agenda?
We could do it either way. What's your pleasure?
We can do it that way if you'd like.
No, either way, I'm good with it.
That's fine. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for Mr. Atherton, a second for Ms. Hauser, Ms. Smiley.
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
I vote yes. Did I ask Ms. Moore already?
Yes.
Okay, great. And the agenda has been approved, and now we will move on to public comment. Each speaker will be recognized by Ms. Melanie Stowe, who will indicate if the speaker would like to have interpretation from Ms. Blufco. Mr. Schofield will unmute the speaker and begin the timer once they have started to speak. In this remote environment, sound checks will not be counted as part of the three minutes. Additionally, if speakers are being interpreted, that time will not be counted against their three minutes. Ms. Stowe, will you please recognize our first speaker this evening?
Good evening, Madam Chair. The first three speakers, I do not see listed, so I'm going to read your names. And if you are listed under a different name, we will need you to log back in with the name you signed up to speak with. So, those individuals are Angela Kimball, Jo Alderman, and Jennifer Olson, and Lori Huff. So, if those four individuals are on the call with a different name, if you would sign back in, and we will come back to you at the end. The first speaker on the call is Noel Martin.
Ms. Martin, are you there?
Sorry, I was having some trouble with my mute button. I'll pass on speaking tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Martin.
The next speaker is Jamie Pollan.
Ms. Pollan?
I'm here. It just took a moment for it to unmute.
Okay, great. We'll be patient.
Thank you so much. I would just like to speak in favor of the resolution that's been proposed tonight. The school district has a long history of racial inequities, and a group of community members and I spent several months advocating before the Board. And this resolution feels like the natural culmination of the work that many of us had been doing. And I would just like to ask that each of the members of the Board vote in favor of that resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pollan. Ms. Stowe, will you please recognize our next speaker?
The next speaker is Cheryl Alderman.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you may begin.
Thank you. This is Cheryl Alderman. I would like to speak regarding the reopening of schools, if possible. I just continue to be extremely disappointed with the decisions that the Board has been making regarding COVID. I think we all understand COVID is perfectly real, and I understand the risks. Because of my profession is actually to work in COVID pediatric trials, I understand the process of making a fully informed decision based on risk-to-benefit ratio. And I don't think that the Board understands the scientific facts. Making decisions based on feelings and not facts is frankly unacceptable. As a parent, scientist, and researcher, I would like to express my support to reopen schools with the proper precautions. Taking away choice from parents and letting feelings make decisions is not a way to run the Board. Please consider using the scientific facts and data. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alderman.
The next speaker is Abby Barger.
Did that do the trick? Am I here?
You're here.
Awesome. I also just wanted to thank you guys for continuing to have these meetings virtually so that more people can participate in them. And I also appreciate your cautious approach to reopening schools. My main reason for being here tonight is to speak in favor of the resolution voting on. I'm very pleased with this resolution tonight, and I hope that you will. As it is, it's beautifully written and includes a lot of very important measures moving forward that we need to keep our eyes on in this district. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Barger.
The next speaker is Mark Xavier.
Hello, can you hear me?
If you could turn your volume up just a little bit, Mr. Xavier, that would be great.
Can you hear me?
Maybe a little louder. Getting better.
Is this better now?
That's better. Thank you.
Okay, great. Number one is, I know that I do not have a lot of time, but I would like to speak in favor of the resolution. It is really substantive. It has a lot of good stuff in it for the whole county, not one particular group, but for the whole county in general. And the other things that I would like to speak about is how we can actually remove the noises as a body, and actually to get things done. What I'm saying by that is, it's really simple, is that we know the county, in terms of educational, for certain groups, and talking specifically for minority kids, the success has not been great, well, has not been good. Great is the higher level than good. The success has not been good at all. So, I would hope that this time around, then we would start a way to actually measure the education for the kids, and actually to remove the noises and get things done for the kids. Get things done in terms of education for the kids. Have a system of measure that actually measures those kids' education. Also, have a system of accountability across the Board in order to get things done. To me, I think number one is, get a system of accountability, and also remove the noise to actually get things done for all the kids in Orange County, specifically for minority children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Xavier.
The next speaker is Heather Redding.
This is Heather. Can you hear me? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. As an Orange County resident, I fully support the proposed resolution for the Board's next steps towards equity in education in OCS, and I hope it receives the full vote of the Board this evening. I think all 14 of the actions listed in the resolution are equally critical to dismantling inequities in our schools and eradicating educational disparities. As the school board and community takes on these initiatives, I'd also like to remind you that we have an elementary school in Hillsborough that happens to be named after one of the largest slaveholding families in North Carolina. Cameron Park Elementary School was built in the 50s on Paul Cameron's Burnside Estate, which at one point stretched across 70 acres of land. Burnside was the name of Cameron's home, which was built by enslaved people. And Paul Cameron himself enslaved 900 people across 30,000 acres, including 470 people in Orange County. Other sources claim he enslaved up to 1,900 people. Paul Cameron also married the daughter of Supreme Court Chief Justice Thomas Ruffin, whose portrait was just removed from the Orange County Courthouse this year because he was a slaveholder and also involved in the slave trade. So, Cameron Park Elementary School is named after a family whose power and prominence was built off the labor of enslaved men, women, and children. And while I understand that renaming a school may not be the highest priority right now, it's also more than just a symbolic action. It demonstrates that we, as a community, no longer choose to honor, recognize, and memorialize individuals and families who partook in the kidnapping, trafficking, and violent control of black bodies. It shows that we are not trapped in history where white supremacist names are enshrined on buildings, where children of all backgrounds come to learn in a safe environment. So, I urge the Board to pass the resolution that's proposed, but I also urge the Board to open a discussion about renaming Cameron Park Elementary School in order to align with its principles of equity and inclusion. I would encourage the school board to reach out to families who are descendants of the enslaved people of Orange County and allow them to take the lead in this discussion and decision-making process. Thank you for your commitment to strengthening our schools and your commitment to racial equity.
Thank you, Ms. Redding.
The next speaker is a representative with WTBD, and Ms. Blufco will be interpreting for them and for you.
They're unmuted.
Ms. Blufco, are you on the call?
Jo, will you please unmute Ms. Blufco? Thank you.
Ms. Blufco?
Not seeing her on the call anywhere. Give me just a second.
She's in the attendee list.
Mr. Schofield, will you please let me know when you have found an unmuted her?
Hi.
Mr. Schofield and Ms. Stowe, is our speaker unmuted?
They are.
Ms. Blufco, will you please tell our speaker that if they are having issues and can reconnect, then we can call them again if needed?
Okay, we'll come back. The next speaker is Kelly Wirt.
I have no comment this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wirt. So, Dr. Wirt, we said hey.
The next speaker is Melanie Von Bronsberg.
I have no comment this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Brittany Thompson.
I have no comment this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
The next speaker is Jo Alderman.
Okay, is that working?
Yes.
All right, sounds good. So, the main reason, well, and the whole equity thing, I wasn't aware of that being the agenda for today. I just jumped on just to speak about how I'm very frustrated, as a parent, with having the school closure when all of the other private schools across Orange County, with the exception of like one or two, are currently open. And they're not seeing huge rises in cases, or even having to reshut down, unlike our universities, that obviously that has been an issue because of people parting and all kinds of stuff. But my main question is, what sort of metrics are we going to be looking at to finally decide how we're going to open and when we're going to open? And, you know, because currently, we're below the 5% test threshold, especially in Orange County, and especially in the 27278 ZIP code, which I belong to. And it's well below the 5%, and it has been for quite some time. I think it's like at 2.1% testing positive of the tests that are given. North Carolina in general, the numbers are going down. North Carolina in general, the numbers are going down. It's not as bad as it used to be, and we have effectively made the curve, you know, fall. So what sort of tricks are we looking at in the future? For we, is everybody going to have to have a, you know, a shot so that they can possibly have 50% immunity? Or that's my main question, and it's not really so much a comment as just a question, if you could address that.
Thank you, Mr. Alderman. We don't typically, well, in fact, in policy, we don't respond directly to comments made during public comment, but if you'll send us an email, I'd be glad to respond to you.
I've emailed actually three times, no responses.
I respond to every single email I get, so try me again. And I, or give me a call, my number is on the district website.
Okay, sounds good. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Mr. Alderman.
Okay, there are four speakers that have not logged in. Just want to note to Ms. McKenzie's comment, if you would like to email the board, you're welcome to do that, and that's Angela Kim, Lori Huff, WTBD, and Jennifer Olson. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doe. Thank you, Mr. Schofield, for your help with public comment. I really appreciate it. Thank you to all of our speakers this evening. Now we will move on to the consent agenda. We have already had one alteration, moving the minutes to the next item. Is, are there any other shifts, or do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended in a previous vote?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Stevens, a second from Mr. Atherton. Ms. Doyle? Yes. Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Consent agenda is adopted. We'll move on to the minutes from August 24th. Mr. Atherton?
Yes, I just have one amendment to request as part of the motion to approve the minutes. So at the section of the discussion of learning labs, just to add in the statement, during the voting, Mr. Atherton requested the financial impact of the motion. Staff stated they needed a few minutes to provide. Ms. Doyle asked for clarity on the numbers. Ms. Smiley recommended a possible way to determine. Ms. Stevens called the questions. Question, Chair asked how to proceed with no advice from counsel. Chair McKenzie asked for a vote to be moved forward.
Is, do I have, is that a motion to amend, Mr. Atherton? Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Atherton and a second from Ms. Hauser. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle? Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Okay, then the minutes are approved with Mr. Atherton's amendment. We will move on to our first item for information this evening, which is an update on the first nine weeks in preparing for Plan B.
So good evening again, Board Chair Mrs. McKenzie, Vice Chair Mrs. Stevens, and to the entire board. Tonight, we are going to present an update on the seven areas that we presented last, at the last board meeting, as well as share where we are with regards to planning for Plan B. So if we could project the PowerPoint presentation for tonight? Yep, I will be, I will get there momentarily. Hang up. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Crimmens. So while Mrs. Crimmens is bringing up the PowerPoint, I just want to note that it's, while it's hard to believe today marked the beginning of the fifth week of remote learning under Plan C. Five weeks is the equivalent of 35 days, 840 hours, and 50,400 minutes, but who's counting? These five weeks have been marked with a lot of hard-won successes, plenty of challenges, and still a myriad of unknowns. While we've come a long way and still have hurdles to overcome, I am proud, very, very proud, of the accomplishments that we have made in these very trying and challenging times. I want to take this opportunity to wholeheartedly thank everyone on the school board, all staff and families for all of your efforts, flexibility, support, flexibility, and grace, and more flexibility, as it is all helping us to move forward in the learning process while also keeping our students and staff safe. So while difficult and unimaginable at times, the courageous work, collaboration, and sacrifices unfolding in Orange County is nothing short of amazing. And so again, a very sincere and heartfelt thank you to all of you. Next slide, please. So as I shared previously, tonight, we are going to not only provide an update on the seven key areas outlined on this slide and that we provided updates on at the August 24th board meeting, we are also going to provide updates regarding where we are with the seven items as it relates to preparing for Plan B. So yes, we're in Plan C. Clearly, we're in Plan C, but we're also planning for Plan B. Rest assured, we want to return to our classrooms just as soon as it is safe to do so. So while we're in Plan C, we are preparing for Plan B, which again is a hybrid of remote and in-person learning. I also want to mention that the four priorities that we began this COVID-19 journey with back in March are still alive and well, as they are subsumed in these seven areas. And so to start us off tonight, I am going to punt to Crystal Vaught, Director of Testing and Accountability, and Ms. Vaught is going to give us an update with regards to enrollment and attendance since our last meeting. Ms. Vaught?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, and all who are in attendance. I am before you this evening to give you updates on enrollment and attendance. Of course, a brief overview, the enrollment is the date when a student actually reports to school for the first time this school year. That total generally increases. However, it could also decrease. And our enrollment is what determines the amount of funding we receive from NCDPI. They do use a formula, and based on their formula, they generate a number. And that is the number of 7,281, which was the anticipated enrollment. For our attendance, once a student has enrolled, then each day we take attendance, and that number resets to zero each day. Attendance is used to inform our expectancy rates and also our dropouts. If we could go to the next slide, please? Thank you. So the information you'll see on the upcoming slides, the number we have used for our projected enrollment is based on the number of active student accounts in Power School for Orange County schools. This is what's displayed here. Of course, this is a review, day one through five. We can go to the next slide. We've added day six through 10, which was August 31st through September 4th. Again, our projected enrollment as of day 10, we had 7,207 active students in Power School. If we go to the next slide, we'll start seeing our project, our actual daily enrollment. And our daily enrollment is a reflection of the actual number of students who really did show up for school this year. Again, this is day one through five. If we can go to the next slide for our update for day six through 10, on day 10, our actual enrollment was 7,088. So our decrease or final enrollment was down by 119. That is impacted by families who've requested transfers out, withdrawals, and also a small percentage of no-shows. Thankfully, our state legislators have voted to hold public school units harmless for this school year, which means that even though our enrollment is less than the overall projections from the state and our own internal projections, fortunately, we will not lose any positions or funding as a result of our shortfall with the enrollment. So as we gather more data, we attempt to learn more information and monitor more closely. And if we go to the next slide, we have updated our information for our average daily attendance for Week 1, which again, the average is just an overall number for all five days combined. It is a percentage. We can go to the next slide to see a comparison between Week 1 and Week 2. And again, I'd like to note that our teachers and school staff are doing a really great job, not only in providing instruction in a remote learning environment, but maintaining attendance records as well. If we can go to the next slide. So our daily attendance process, again, DPI has implemented new attendance categories for this year to reflect our options of in-person and remote learning. So students are considered present off-site if they are participating in remote learning. And teachers are marking students unexcused absence if they are not engaged in the actual coursework or the synchronous class time. So just as we've stated previously, we know these categories exist. Our teachers have been working very closely and following up with families and students after the first and second absence. And then, as outlined, we have our student support team and our social workers following up with students and families after the third absence. So we'll go on to the next slide because we actually have information by daily attendance. So this is the first report where we actually show each day separately. This individual report shows attendance by those attendance codes. We know that for pre-K through grade eight, the homeroom teacher is marking attendance for the entire day. Our students in grades nine through 12, their attendance is marked by class period as scheduled. So if you look closely, it is listed by school abbreviation. The highest numbers are in the categories for present off-site and unexcused absence. The overall grand total is a number roughly 61,000 or so. This represents 15 days, so if you wanted a general idea of what that represents in students, that 61,817 would roughly equate to 4,100 students or so. This, of course, is less than the 7,000 we know we have enrolled. So some of the concerns we see just reviewing this information, we know based on our follow-up with schools who have variations in their data, we have learned that there are some teachers who are leaving attendance blank. We do know that some misinterpreted the attendance codes and are using present onsite as opposed to present off-site. There are variations between schools, and there is still an impact of households who lack connectivity. If we can go on to the next slide, please? This slide actually gives us a total by day. And for example, where we knew the overall enrollment numbers for schools, that number should be very, very close, or if not identical, from day to day. We did see some slight decreases and increases. Wednesdays and Thursdays were the day of the week with the highest attendance rates. Again, we still have concerns around instances where attendance is left blank, attendance on Fridays, variations again between individual schools, and of course, the impact of households lacking connectivity. Some challenges we've uncovered, the use of unexcused absence does not provide us any in-depth reasons as to whether or not that is a student who did not have internet access, or whether or not it was someone who just chose not to participate. So we are continuing to work very closely with our schools to continuously improve our processes. Our district Power School Coordinator, Joy Tolan, and myself, we have actually followed up one-on-one with each of the schools where those variations and inconsistencies existed. Moving forward, this upcoming week, during our weekly principals' meeting, we will also provide a list of look-forers and potential pitfalls for them to work through with their staffs, in addition to reminders about the use of present onsite versus present off-site, the ability to add comments, and we will continue to monitor weekly as we are in these, in Plan C and under remote learning. Other information that we will be providing includes data by grade and by race. We have not seen large variations between Title I and non-Title I schools. K-8 continues to have very high participation and attendance rates across all days of the week, and we want to make certain that all of our school partners really understand moving forward, the link between enrollment, membership, and attendance, which is also known as our principal's monthly report. My final note would just be to remind everyone that today was Day 20. So this is the timeline moving forward where students will be deemed as dropouts or captured on a transparency report if they have not reported or quote-unquote enrolled for this school year. I will pause for questions and comments.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Vaught. Just a couple of questions. So this difference between Cedar Ridge and Orange High School here, for example, am I to take it that one of the, they were, there were different understandings of how it should be captured and that that's going to be corrected moving forward? Is that, is that what you're saying about that difference?
Yes, ma'am. There was a use of present onsite at Orange High. There have also been some discrepancies at the secondary level with the attendance marking for Fridays in general. So we have, we have followed up with each of those schools individually to work with the principal and their data manager to correct that information. So when we meet with them this Thursday, that information is accurate. But picture, we do have some room for improvement, just to make certain all of our procedures are really tight and clearly understood at all levels.
Okay, thank you. And is there a way for us to understand? One of the real big questions I have is, I understand there are multiple ways for somebody to be marked present, off-site. for somebody to be marked present off-site. Um, and I am curious how many of our students are engaging synchronously and whether there are any patterns in that by, uh, grade, uh, race, gender, you know, um, whether they have a hotspot or I don't, you know, some different things. Do you have a way to tell that? And are, are we gonna hear more about that at some point?
Uh, we actually have that information. We are first circling back to work with the schools to make certain that they have a level of understanding of that information and then walking them through next steps in terms of the quality control piece.
Mm-hmm.
The only quote designation that counts for being present is the present off-site. Present onsite is just as if you were marking them absent in another category. And that's one of the misunderstandings I know that was quite prevalent. Um, the unexcused absence is the only absence that is not approved per policy, but it does not give us a clear line between if it's connectivity or if it's just refusing to participate. So we'll be working with teams to help them understand that we have options of using, uh, adding comments. And hopefully, just the notion of marking attendance each day. Um, our teachers have been very thoughtful in changing attendance or erring in favor of the student in not marking attendance, but in doing so, it is slightly skewing our data. So we are going to just make certain that we all have the same level of understanding, uh, moving forward.
Okay, great. But, but you do have a way of telling whether students engage synchronously or not, or like offline, doing the work offline then?
No, ma'am. It's just present off-site, yes, ma'am. Whether they are in real time or after the fact, a teacher could always go back and change that attendance to present off, off-site the day afterwards.
Okay, um, so that, um, that makes sense in terms of what we're capturing here and, and why it matters. I will say, I think that this is important information for us to have as a board and as a district in understanding. Um, I think some of the things we could analyze from that are which students is online learning working most effectively? If there are patterns in particular grade levels where they are more or less, um, present for their synchronous time? I think that would be helpful. So if there is, if there is some way for us to gather that, that would be my recommendation.
Yes. Or any other comments from the board?
And I dare say that our, uh, use of Canvas and on, other online resources will also assist us engaging, uh, the amount of time synchronously as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much for your questions. I am now going to turn over to Dr. Kathleen Dawson.
Great, thank you, Ms. Vat. Good evening and thank you Chair McKenzie, Vice Chair Stevens, Superintendent Dr. Felder and board members. We just have a few, um, updates for you from the technology department. In Plan C, um, since August 10th, we've closed over 2,500 help tickets. And, uh, we've distributed over 900, 900, um, hotspots, 516, um, initial during the summer and then just within the last couple of weeks, uh, 400 additional, um, hotspots. We are looking to order more. Um, there are additional opportunities that have come up that we want to make sure that we are ordering the best devices under the best, um, opportunities that are out there. But we will be ordering more, um, devices as soon as we can. We have, um, you know, shared with our school teams and our families to just remind them that there is a, a high demand nationally and there is about a two to three week delay in delivery date. But as soon as we are able, we will order and make sure that we get these to our families, families and our staff as soon as possible. We are continuing to increase our Wi-Fi access points at our elementary schools and we have strengthened the service at our secondary, um, parking lots. The teacher devices are expected the first part of October. They're in process of being, um, prepared now. Our student Chromebooks, as we know, uh, our vendor had to find an alternative manufacturer, manufacturer, and they have, um, found one. But again, that has, um, delayed all of their orders nationally and internationally in their orders. And so they're going by the order date, of course, and we are in that queue. But unfortunately, uh, that we do not have an expected delivery date because of this, um, this delay in being on the entity list. So the, um, devices that we have rented for our students, the package deal that we were able to get because that was the minimum, um, number of months that we could rent for was six months. So as of right now, we're set for, um, five, four and a half more months and we will monitor that as it comes to finding out if we can get an estimated delivery date and, um, see if that needs to be adjusted at all. We are hoping that the student Chromebooks will be delivered within that, um, that six-month window. Teachers now do have access to our, um, purchased version of Zoom, which will help to, um, provide another layer of security as our teachers, um, provide opportunities for, um, you know, our online learning and through our, um, small group work and one-to-one sessions through Zoom. This week, uh, our fifth graders, uh, are now able to use their email accounts and they will only be able to email from other, um, email send out and receive from other Orange County, um, district email accounts. Teachers have expressed, um, a need for second monitors. So we are looking at what that could possibly look like and how we are able to meet the teachers' needs, to be able to provide them the support that they need to be able to teach virtually, uh, remote while trying to also see the materials that they're trying to, um, teach. And as we prepare for Plan B, we have, um, we're almost done with all of our flat panel installations at our schools, which will allow for teachers to have that second monitor once, um, we are back in-person hybrid model. And also that will allow the teachers to livestream to those students who are on the remote, um, alternating week and for our virtual academy students. So in preparation, our DLC NIT staff are also working on developing, um, professional development for our teachers so that they know how to use the new VeriCast technology that's connected to the flat panels. And so that is our, um, update from the technology department. And if there aren't any questions.
Mr. Atherton and then Ms. Hauser.
Yes, um, so for the hotspots, um, you know, I know we still have some that are unmet. Are we looking at, is that unmet because we haven't purchased them? Um, have we looked at, uh, other, uh, subscribing companies like AT&amp;T versus Verizon? Because we do know that you could get a better signal from AT&amp;T or Verizon depending on where you are. Could you just give a little more detail on that?
Sure. And, and that is, uh, while we know that our families, there are many more families that are requesting either because, again, they have, more of our family requests are because of the lack of quality service. Um, but we've been actually working with Verizon. I've been working, um, with the county and also this, the state and trying to figure out, you know, what, um, is the best service provider and where we've been looking at maps of where the towers are and trying to see, uh, actually last week I met with Verizon, T-Mobile and, um, a retired, uh, person from AT&amp;T just to learn more about, you know, how can we try to get at what's the best service? Uh, just today, we spoke with a representative from the state that's connected to the NC Connect program. And again, trying to look at, um, how we can get funding from them to provide some of our devices because that is a program that just became available. So as quickly as we can, we're looking into all of those different options to see what is the next best way to try to meet our families' needs. Because even families who have a Verizon hotspot, that's not always getting them the best service either. And it's for just what you said, that you know what? In that area, it might be another provider that provides a stronger service there in that re, uh, region than the Verizon. Uh, we also know that, you know, there are some things that families can do at home to try to get a stronger service. For instance, just physically taking their hotspot and trying it at different windows, um, around their house to see which part of their house is, is facing the direction of the tower and, and, you know, where they located. So we're also working with, um, our vendors to try to get some tutorial guidance for families. Say, hey, try this, try that. And so we're just working on a lot of moving parts right now. But we do understand our families', um, their frustration at, you know, trying to get strong service and we are working as quickly as we can and trying to provide the best support for our families as soon as possible.
Yeah, I just want to say, as a, you know, a board member, I, if we need to buy more access points, I'm in 100% support of doing that and not waiting for us to, you would come back to ask. Because every day, this is somebody not online, somebody having to do something odd, go into a parking lot or any number of items and the, their normal frustration, right? So I, I just want to say, you know, if we need to engage with other vendors, I, I'm, I, I know that we all are. I'm just saying, speaking for myself, I definitely am supportive of that. The, the second thing I wanted to just ask is, on the second monitor that teachers are getting, that is fantastic. They do need that, you know, just because of online meetings. Are we providing some educational development on the second monitor? I know we are with the VeriCast, which is different. But on the second monitor, meaning how you do an extended display versus a duplicate display and what you're trying to effectively do so they can be very effective in utilizing this new ability that they're gonna get.
Yep, so, you know, as we're looking into the second monitors, anytime that we deploy, we would always do so with the professional development support. Yes.
Thank you.
So I'm just gonna jump in here real quick and, um, sort of echo what Mr. Atherton said to Dr. Felder and Dr. Dawson. I think that the board is fully willing to have emergency board meetings to approve spending of hotspots or monitors or anything we can do to make our students and teachers less easier. So if that is something that would expedite the process, just let me know and I will, um, summon the board quickly. Ms. Hauser, did you have, did you have something you wanted to say, Ms. Hauser?
Yeah, I, I just that, use Dr. Dawson's comment. I think that I am really appreciative that staff is helping people place their hotspots, not just receiving the device and putting it in their house, where they put it, getting an external antenna, all those things. I'm surprised to be getting them to work with the experiment too. Um, but I don't know, um, when you say people have unreliable service, you know, most people are on CenturyLink or something else completely. That's not a DSL copper network, it's not a carrier network. So I'm not sure I understand that. But, um, just go ahead and buy the hotspots for, we need to give them out. And if they don't work, if, if they don't work, can we take them back and can we return them? So we, you know, I'm just worried that we are overly limiting access and people are waiting. And, and as you know, we're getting some amount of hate mail, I call it, about that. So we can get more hotspots out faster, um, and not worry, and let, and then worry about if they're working. So is there a way to do that?
So we're actually trying to do a lot of that at the same time. So for instance, like today, I just got information. They're saying, let us know how many you need for this. So I'll be submitting that information from the NC Connect. So we'll be putting in an order that way. We also run a report on the 916 hotspots that are already out there to kind of assess which ones are being used, which ones are not being used. So we pull the ones that are not being used back. So we're doing all of that at the same time. Um, and, but this week we should be putting in an, an order. And thank you, um, Ms. McKenzie for letting us know because we will be coming and asking for, for funding to, um, put the order in.
Yeah. If I could add, one, there's new variable that's come up and that's kids moving. So kids that had good internet, all of a sudden don't have good internet and the schools are trying to sort that. So we have a whole new variable of internet access.
Okay. If there are any other questions, then I would like to, um, pass to Dr. Williams, who'll speak next about meal distribution.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Madam Board Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Felder and all in attendance. Um, we have several, um, slides we'd like to share with you, updates as it pertains to, um, Plan B from operations. First, I would, uh, yield to Ms. Margie Davison, who would share with us in reference to the meals, uh, at this time. And from her, we will go to Mr. Larry Albert, who's Director of Transportation, to Mr. Nick Mincy, Director of Construction, to Ms. Sarah Pitts, Director of Environmental Health and Safety. Uh, Margie.
Good evening.
Good evening, we can hear you.
Okay, uh, thank you. As you can see, our meal distribution is going strong, numbers are climbing. Um, I just want to acknowledge that there is a difference now that we have the waiver. Um, we are being, we can and are feeding anyone between the ages of zero to 18 years of age. No questions asked and it can be any child within this area. And we can even go so far as to feed children out of this area if we are asked to do so. That said, because we are under the summer feeding program and not under the National School Lunch Program, the reimbursement rate is higher. So that is the reason why our revenue and our surplus is what it is. Um, there is a dollar difference in reimbursement. Also, when we swing into the summer feeding, for the National, um, School Lunch Program in January, we have to take into consideration if they are free and reduced or paid and those rates will vary. So we will see a marked difference in reimbursement and where the program stands in December or in January, sorry. As far as free and reduced applications, uh, the numbers indicate that, uh, for free, we are, it, it says, uh, 953, actually. We are at 1,044 and for reduced, we are at 57. Two weeks ago, we were 179 lower and for the free, and 29 lower for the reduced. We are getting applications daily, um, not as rapidly as I would like. The mailings are due to go out. We have to stuff the envelopes and that is on schedule for tomorrow. We have the applications in the envelopes with the address on it. We just have to have, put in the letter that, um, explains the need to have these applications filled out and returned. Are there questions?
Ms. Smiley?
Um, well, my first thing is I'm glad to see that there's a surplus so far and really, really glad that the summer feeding program was, um, extended. Um, so thank you, um, and I think that's great. Um, uh, I am wondering a couple of things. One is, um, have we looked again or can we look again at bus route delivery um, in order to better meet more families where they are? Um, I think that there's now more flexibility with the state transportation money in terms of our ability to do that. I don't know what the relative cost of that would be, but I think we could probably feed more kids if we consider that. Um, and the other question I have is, um, in terms of the free and reduced price, um, lunch applications, I believe that there's some tie between that and Title I funding. And I'm just wondering if we, is that true? Like if we let, if we don't get up our, our free and reduced price lunch applications to a more accurate number, uh, of families who qualify, will that impact like our Title I funds? That might be more of a question for Ms. Rath, I'm not sure.
It will impact us because of reimbursement rates are, this reimbursement for our department, the reimbursement rates are different. Um, and also it will impact our overall budget because we do not have supplemental sales and we do not have catering sales at this point. And all of those things tie together to make us profitable when we are in session and children are. are on property.
I guess I was just wondering about actual like Title I funds and whether they're, whether they're tied to this in some way?
Yes, yes ma'am. If I can interject, you are correct, that is part of the component for making that calculation of Title I.
And so we will have less Title I funding if we do not get this. And I would just, I mean, anecdotally, it is a terrible recession, there are so many people out of work. I would imagine we have many, many more students this year who actually do qualify for free and reduced. So my hope is that we will, I'm glad we're doing everything we can mailing out applications, I would just say, stick with it.
Yes, ma'am.
And the other question on the, on the bus route delivery?
I think the busing folks and Rhonda can better answer that. Availability is one thing, but the bus department and Rhonda never speak to that than I would.
Larry or Cantina, if either of you can speak to that?
Yes, as a transportation department, we are, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Department, we are willing and able, I am in 100% agreeance that we could reach many more children that need, need food, adding more routes, distribution points, however you may have it. But like I said, that's, that is a question that Rhonda would technically be able to answer a little better with the financial side of it. She keeps us on the topic.
We're taking a look, yes, hi, we're taking a look currently at what those costs would be for making these deliveries along the routes and trying to also get an estimate of our anticipated impact of when we do transition into Plan B and what those routes will look like and what those costs will be as a result of that. With this flexibility that we have received in our transportation funds, of course, it does allow us the flexibility to pursue these options and, you know, look at this. We just need to, of course, keep it changed, make sure that we have enough funds to support when we do transition into Plan B.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rath and Ms. Ralbert.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes. So one of the comments or concerns I have is, I do, I did get in the mail, the free and reduced form, and this print on here is very small. I would say it's either a .6 or lower to read it. And very confusing. And I do see it does say, you know, call this person or that person. And I worry that if we are not proactive or putting a separate sheet of paper or a color coded post-it on there and say, please call for help filling out this form, that we may not get the numbers we need to support all our students. As Ms. Smiley said, you know, there's got to be, you know, if we had 2,100 last year, it's, it's going to be higher. And this is just an indication of, you know, people are not understanding the importance of this, or they're getting the forms and they're overwhelmed with them on how to fill it out or what to do with it. So I just encourage us to maybe take an extra step and add a post-it or something on there to say, please call this person. I know it says it in a very small print to call, but I think we're going to have to be more, you know, aggressive on this to, to help these families that will help us be able to provide more services to all of our students.
So, Mr. Atherton, if I may, you are spot on, and that's exactly what we're doing, hence the delay in getting the mailings out. As Ms. Davison mentioned, the envelopes are going to be stuffed starting tomorrow, well, they're not going to be stuffed with just the form. We have a cover letter, a very brief letter in English and in Spanish, because that form, we have no control over the form itself, it comes from the government, and so it is what it is, but we know it's daunting. And so we, we do have a cover letter that's going along with the form, not only to say, to get at what you described, but also how we can be of support with filling out a form. We're not sure if families know, they can reach out to their social worker, school staff can fill out the form for them, how to drop off the form, they don't have to mail it back. So we are, yeah, are going to be and continue to be relentless trying to get these forms completed.
Excellent. And, and I hope we're still having the forms at the drop-off locations and offering to help them fill them out right there on the spot.
We are doing that daily. I just sent out a reminder today.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Dr. Felder.
Okay, if there are no other questions for Ms. Davison, we're going to let her move on. And next up would be Mr. Albert.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, and all in attendance. On behalf of the Transportation Department, I will be giving you an update in our current Plan C daily operations. I would first like to say, everyone has done a great job, as well as a big thank you to all other departments for their continued help and flexibility. With that being said, while we are still in Plan C, transportation will continue to support SSL's child nutrition as needed, as, as well as our daily transportation duties. As we, as we prepare for Plan B, we will have our drivers trained on October the 12th and 13th. The training will consist of proper PPE, student seat assignments and attendance, proper disinfecting and cleaning, transportation student at the station forms, and the health and safety protocols. In closing, our parent communication will be via the Orange County Schools Return to School website at orangecountyfirst.com, as well as the atestation forms that are available in English and Spanish. The links are provided on, on here for everyone to, to look at. I will pause for any questions.
Ms. Smiley?
I, I saw a headline somewhere, maybe Education Week or somewhere, that some school districts are even like pay, offering to pay parents if they will transport their own children. I am not suggesting we do that, but one, I'm concerned about the total volume of students that we might be transporting in Plan C, B, even if we're at like 50% capacity in the buildings. Do we have a sense right now of how many students would ride the bus? And like, have we asked people to drive their children if they can, or something like that? Because I just, if I remember the original bus routes, it was like literally impossible. We rode, you know, rode them 24 hours a day to get all the kids to school, so.
Right. That is, you can ask parents to drive their kids, and that's a, that's some logistics that I'm not really prepared to answer fully at this point in time. But the, the current data that we have as of three or four weeks ago, shows that we have close to a third of the student population that is still requesting transportation. Hopefully, everything will grow, and as we transition into Plan B, we will have a larger volume of students that are requesting transportation.
And if I could also ask, thank you so much, Mr. Albert, if I could also add that as part of the next survey to families, so we will be serving families to gauge their willingness to return. We also want to check their desire to shift to Plan B, or would it be virtual learning? As part of that whole survey, there will be questions around transportation, because as Mr. Albert mentioned, what we have now was from several weeks ago, things may have changed. And so in order for us to fully plan for Plan B, that's information that we need to know. We also need to know how many parents are planning to drive, because that too has implications for planning for Plan B. So.
Thank you both so much.
Is there any other question?
I don't see any. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be pointing to Mr. Nick Mense.
All right. Thank you, Larry. Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. Just wanted to talk to you a little bit tonight about construction and facilities. So we have been very busy, probably as busy as I think I've been in a very long time. We have multiple projects still underway. We have suffered from COVID delays through some of these projects, but we have pushed on and we have pushed the contractors as hard as we possibly could. I have a list on the screen showing a few of the projects that we're still involved with heavily. The first one being the vestibule project. The bond package for safety incentives for our district was to renovate vestibules at seven schools under this package. Our substantial completion date for that, we're hoping to be 10-1. The one item that we were heavily delayed on was glass. There is a pretty substantial national shortage for glass right now, and that is starting to arrive. And installation has been going on for this last, I'd say last week and a half. And we're hoping by 10-1, once the glazing's completed, it'd be pretty easy to wrap the rest of those projects up. Those schools that are involved are Orange High School, Cedar Ridge, Gravely Hill, CW Stanford, AL Standback, Central Elementary, and New Hope. And all of them are really starting to take shape. Painting is being done, glazing's going in, and final electrical touches will be coming in place in the next few days. So we're really excited about this. This will provide another layer of security for our campuses going forward. It is going to be nice to be able to have a consistency across the district that when you meet and come into one of our schools, you, you'll come through an office area where you'll be vetted out before you're allowed to enter the campus. It's been a critical request of the public, and we're glad to see this project moving forward. Cameron Park, next big project on the list, our substantial completion is 10-19. We are pushing this one as hard as possible. I've stepped up our efforts on the contractor over the last two to three weeks. Equipment is finally starting to arrive at a very rapid pace. Air conditioning equipment for classrooms, the glazing for the front entrances, all the metal for the exterior of the building. So we are full on at that school right now. The kitchen is nearing completion. It has been quite the process, and we are glad to upgrade the school. The environmental improvements and architectural improvements to the school have been badly needed, and we're meeting a large need with this project. There is one piece of equipment that is still on delay. Train manufacturing for heating and air conditioning is still in a huge delay on equipment. We just need a very large piece of equipment to complete the air conditioning for the cafeteria. The, the good side to this is that we have finally, and everybody's excited about it in the cafeteria staff, the kitchen will have air. So we should be able to actually supplement the cafeteria seating area with some of the air conditioning provided in the kitchen, which is something we have never had. So, so all is not lost there, and we will make it work. We are pushing to have all of the classroom work on the upper hallway at Cameron done by the end of this month, in about two weeks' time. At this point, I see no reason we won't make that. That will give us plenty of time to clean up the first two weeks of October and have things ready for teachers to get back in their spaces and be ready for a return. So the next project on the list is safety initiatives. We have pushed through two major schools so far. Sonatrol Security is our vendor, and they have completed the installation portion at Orange High School. And I would say they're probably 95% plus at Cedar Ridge. And they have already begun some of the installation work at AL Standback. So we're moving along rapidly there. And the next major part of that will be implementing the badges and all the security portions for our staff. And that work is also underway, and we hope to be passing out badges and getting that project wrapped up before very long. Orange High School Geothermal, a project that rolls on and on, we're continuing to push because of COVID. I think this is one of the greatest advancements that we've had in the district this summer and into this fall, is that we have been able to take over many additional areas at Orange High School. And hopefully, I'm not going to say it right at the moment, but hopefully, we can finish that project early. The goal was to be done by fall of 2021, and we're hoping we can beat that by three or four months. So that's yet to be seen. We don't know what COVID is going to continue to do, and we don't know what other projects are underway there, but we're, we're hoping that we will be able to complete that one a little early. So very good things at Orange High School at Geothermal. I would love to catch anybody up to speed on it. We are about 70% on the project as far as actual space that is actually operating on the new geothermal system. In a couple of weeks, we'll probably be in the 80 to 85% range. So we're really excited about it. And the last one on the list for tonight is Cedar Ridge, new classroom addition. It's going to be beautiful. I'm hearing wonderful, wonderful things from everybody who's been to tour. We have kept that to a bare minimum. We are not really supposed to be in that space until the contractor begins to turn that project over. The goal is to be completed by the end of November, November 1st of December, and we are on schedule. We just hope there's minor weather delays for the rest of the hurricane season. So just wanted to recognize a couple of things too, if I could. On the screen you see, we were very fortunate because of timing, we were actually able to redo carpet in the band room and the chorus room at Orange High School. And I will say, I think it was quite the improvement. I know the staff there is ecstatic. Definitely will improve air quality and definitely an architectural improvement. And then we are super excited about Eflin Cheeks. The picture at the bottom is Eflin Cheeks renovated office area. If you have not had a chance to go see it, give it about one more week. We have one more section of flooring to complete, and when we're done with that, it's quite the office. We are extremely ecstatic for Minnie Goins and her crew. It's a very nice space for them to operate out of and will be a real asset to this campus. So this time, I'll open it up for questions.
Mr. Atherton?
Yeah, just one quick question. So on the Orange High School Geothermal project, I know that beyond the geothermal, one of the big items was to renovate the bathrooms. Can you confirm that that's getting done and that that will be part of the completion?
So we have, we have done minor bathroom renovations to this point, but yes, that is part of the plan. The renovation portion to the bathroom is a little more detailed than just merely cosmetic. A lot of the infrastructure of the bathrooms, due to the age of the school, going to require some mechanical engineering design. We're hoping to work with DPI on updating some of the mechanical issues that go on in those restrooms. As you can imagine, 50-year-old plumbing is not all the best. So we're at minimum trying to knock out getting the architectural done, but the ultimate need is, is actually piping. And we will be pursuing that. We have been pushing though, Mr. Atherton and I will tell you, we have painted a tremendous amount of that campus. LED lighting is upgraded through a vast majority of the campus. We are well ahead of the curve on that, and And we've taken advantage of those areas while we've had no students. So yes, and nobody any more than me wants to see some upgrades to the restrooms, and I know our plumbers do.
Thank you so much.
We will keep pushing. Any other questions?
I don't see any. Thank you so much, Mr. Menci.
All right, thank you. And I think I'm supposed to pass off to Sarah. So Sarah Pitts is our next speaker.
Good evening, everyone. As Orange County Schools prepares for on-campus learning, we are reviewing procedures and a return to campus learning plan that will provide an exceptional educational learning experience while keeping paramount the safety of our students and staff. Orange County Schools is currently working on a comprehensive and detailed plan to ensure that these safety guidelines can and are put into action. So envisioning an on-campus day, and I know as parents, we are all extremely excited for that to occur. So before school, as students, families, and staff prepare for a school day, they will need to assess their physical conditions. Staff will attest to their symptoms prior to or immediately upon arriving on campus. Students and families will complete and submit the student's daily symptom screening. The method in which this assessment will be completed is still being evaluated, but we will definitely provide more details as soon as they can be provided. Upon arriving to campus, to accommodate temperature screening and hygiene procedures, arrival times may need to be staggered. All students, staff, and visitors will be required to undergo a temperature screening prior to entering any building. Arriving in the car rider line, a staff member will greet your family and students and take the student's temperature while the student is still in the car, prior to the parent leaving. Bus riders, when they exit the bus, will enter a designated doorway and undergo their temperature screenings. Staff will be stationed along all sidewalks to guide the students along their way. Upon entering the building, all will be required to wash their hands or properly sanitize their hands. Of course, our preference would be that all wash their hands. So when the students get in the classroom, our classrooms will be reduced 50%. Each class size will be divided to de-densify. There will be one desk or designated space provided for each student, and the space will be adjusted according to social guidelines. As you can see in the photos, blue signs were placed on desks and equipment indicating that these shall not be used due to social distancing. In other buildings, desks have been removed from the classrooms to ensure proper social distance. Crossover with other classes in shared spaces will be minimized with students moving in frequently throughout the day. The sharing of supplies will be kept to a minimum. If supplies are shared, they will either be sanitized or quarantined for 72 hours by staff prior to the next reuse to protect all from cross-contamination. Masks will be worn by all staff, students, and visitors entering the building, and we will follow the most recent public health guidelines. Training will be provided to teach students and staff the appropriate ways to affix their masks and avoid touching their face or their masks as much as possible during the day. Face mask break time will occur throughout the day. For handwashing, handwashing and hand sanitizer stations will be monitored to assess compliance, and retraining on proper technique will occur with staff and students as needed. Ample hand hygiene supplies and hand sanitizer stations will be provided throughout each campus. In regards to lunch, lunch will occur on a staggered schedule. Students will most likely dine in their classrooms, or they can dine outside as weather permits. There will be no sharing of food permitted to ensure that all stay safe. Recession will be scheduled to limit crossover between students and cohorts and will be held in accordance with public health guidelines. Physical distance will be observed. Next slide, please. Our nursing staff is diligently working to set up isolation rooms. Training on PPE use and providing medical care to students is occurring with staff to ensure that all staff and students remain safe. The operations department is currently working with each school site to ensure that the site complies with health and safety guidelines, including signage, which will reiterate health and safety practices. Social distance markers are also being placed throughout hallways, highlighting the six-foot distance requirements and advising those within the building of traffic patterns of that space. For a PPE update, staff and secondary student masks have been received, and they have been distributed to sites. 20,000 youth reusable masks have been ordered for elementary-age students and will be distributed upon receipt. I did have a conversation with the vendor this afternoon, and we have been assured that those will be received prior to the first day back to school. Several trainings have been created and are occurring throughout Orange County Schools. All staff have been provided training on COVID-19 and how to protect themselves and others. Temperature screening training has occurred with all staff who are currently completing this task onsite. The Orange County Schools nursing staff is currently scheduling and completing temperature screening trainings with their school-based staff to ensure that we're ready for the return to learn. Safety, temperature screening, and providing medical training courses have occurred with the staff who will be manning our supervised learning labs. Additional trainings will be needed, will be scheduled as needed. Are there any questions for me at this time?
Mr. Atherton and Ms. Smiley, and then Ms. Hauser.
Ms. Pitts, thank you so much for this update and the approach on this. Just a couple of questions. You know, as we look at the classrooms and going back in the classrooms, a lot of feedback that I've gotten from, you know, a lot of our community experts that are in the field, they mentioned having better airflow in our classrooms, right? Whether that's opening windows or, you know, HEPA filters or something else in the classroom to help with that. Could you give just a little bit on the thoughts on that? I didn't hear something specific, but I know that doesn't mean I haven't talked about it, though.
No, I can assure you that the operations team has done a thorough audit of all of our buildings, have assessed that every building has the ability to increase the fresh air intake in the buildings. So that meets the guidelines that NC DHHS and DPI have recommended. I have also been in communication with Mr. Menci and Mr. Ivy about any other recommendations that they may have. We will be talking to staff when they come in about having times where they can open up their windows to allow for airflow, but we need to do that moderately, or fresh air to come in, but we need to do that moderately because as the students come back in, we will be hitting the peak of allergy season for some of our outdoor allergens. We are also looking at the use of air purifiers in rooms such as our isolation room, which may have students in them, but we may not be able to open up air into those spaces because they don't have windows. So yes, Mr. Atherton, we are conducting a study, and we will be sure to provide more information.
Okay, and the other question I had was on the recess in playgrounds. What's the approach to ensure social distancing out there, you know, if kids do go out, right? Is that, is that the plan that we will allow the recess, and how would we manage that in the playground?
So yes, we will allow recess. The recommendation right now is to, is going to be to stay off large playground apparatuses because you are absolutely correct, it's going to be hard to social distance. So the idea would be to allow students to use some of the smaller playground equipment that would allow for social distancing or to also set up alternate activities that they could complete either in isolation or be able to social distance.
All right, thank you.
So my first, my first topic is the ventilation one. And first, Ms. Pitts, I just want to say this whole bucket of things you're talking about and getting ready to reopen is just really massive, so thank you for all the work you and so many people are doing on this. The ventilation question, I'm glad to hear that we are doing this thorough audit. The, the recommendations from DPI and Health and Human Services that I have seen are minimal. And they're from June or May or whenever those first came out. As I was looking at the recommendations that the CDC uses, they reference these, these recommendations from ASHRAE, the American Society of Refrigeration Air Condition. I cannot remember all of them. You probably know them, but they, they recommend the equivalent of MERV-13 in classrooms. So either the, that the air filtration is at MERV-13 or some equivalent. And I think that, you know, there's, there are two really good sources out there, which I'm sure you're aware of, of, you know, there's there's a website out of Harvard's School of Public Health that talks about really specific calculations for like how much fresh air is circulating and, and all of that. And I think when I think about this question, I know we're going to talk about the metrics later tonight. When I thought, think about the question of are we ready to open schools in Plan B? Question one is, is the level of community spread such that it's safe to open the buildings? Question two is, are our physical buildings set up safely according to best practice? Question three is, like, do we have all of the policies, protocols, materials, the PPE, a lot of the things that we're talking about? And then the last one probably is, do we have the staff to do it? There might be more, but those are the four that I'm thinking about. And what, what I would like to see or understand in more depth is, is this question about the physical facilities and literally how much airflow? You know, if we're not going to open up windows and things, like, how much airflow are we going to be getting? Are we going to be able to get the equivalent cleaning of MERV-13? My understanding from some of the audit was that our buildings have air filter, they're just built with like air filters that are MERV-8 and MERV-10. So it seems like the solution is not going to be to like install MERV-13 air filters. But then, so what is Orange County Schools' plan to have adequate air and ventilation in order to open the buildings? So it sounds like you're on that. I just wanted to say personally, I find the DPI DHHS guidance not specific enough, and I think there's a lot of data that's come out since then that we should be drawing from. So that's, that's, I guess, not a question for you. It is a, it is a request more broadly that as we consider whether we are ready, that we have really specific data and information to base that decision on around not just the health metrics and the community spread, but also around what we have done to look at the state of the ventilation in the buildings, and are they, like, ready on that front?
Ms. Hauser, did you have something you wanted to say? You're on mute.
I, yeah, got it. I, I just, thank you for this. It's overwhelming to me. I, I just have a question that in the inevitable case of maybe no fault of ours that a teacher or student is diagnosed with COVID, what is our procedure for handling that? Or are we working on a procedure for handling that?
No, we have a procedure to handle that, and it will be based on the guidelines provided by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. They gave us a really good document on if there are positive or assumed positive cases within the building. I can tell you that our lead nurses are in contact with the Health Department quite frequently. As we have had a couple of cases already in the district, it's kind of been a soft entry to what we can do to protect our students and staff. And when we give that documentation, that final documentation to parents, we can walk through what you can expect. And the board presentation that I know we'll be giving to the board in a more in-depth Plan B will be, will be able to give you exact guidance on this is what it will look like in a situation in which we have a presumed positive or a positive case. And we will most definitely run any decisions we make that are major decisions as far as quarantining and if and when, you know, we need to notify a family through those at the Health Department that can give us exact guidance.
Ms. Smiley?
I have another question slash reaction to the idea of having lunches in the classroom. And Ms. Pitts, you said that classes would be able, weather permitting, to have lunch outside. When I think about having lunch in a classroom and everyone taking off their masks and eating, it seems very, very similar to a restaurant, indoor dining, which we know has created hotspots in case, it has really promoted spread. And so what are we doing to make possible more outdoor eating? Is there a world where we can just consume all of our food outdoors regardless of the weather?
That would be ideal, but I don't know if this time, if we will have the ability to put up structures outside to have all dining outside. I don't believe that the weather will accommodate us through the whole entire year to be able to do so. But we are looking at creative alternatives, potentially, you know, asking parents to bring things like towels and other items in our Plan B that we could potentially have students dine or potentially take their learning process outside to allow for outdoor dining and learning. And we will be looking at those case studies for restaurants and some of the do's and don'ts that we have seen with their practice of opening up dining and social distancing.
Mrs. Smiley, if I might also add, and Dr. Williams, who may want to chime in, I believe there was some research done on costs for pavilions, gazebos, tents, conversations with fire marshals, et cetera, regards to, you know, the feasibility of being able to, to do those types of things. So I, I, Dr. Williams, did you want to speak to what we've been looking into?
Thank you. Yes, I, I shared with you all an update, but at the same time, just want to share with you tonight that in conjunction with the county fire marshal, he is definitely not in favor of doing any types of tents at this time of the year, being that we're in the hype of the hurricane season. But also looking at gazebos, type of things of that nature, even if we took one, if we had one gazebo at each school, which we would need more than one, obviously, it would be at the tune of $195,000 just for 13 gazebos. And one gazebo, the size of about an eight-by-20, would only yield six students to sit at it because of social distancing, safely social distancing. So it's not a lot of bang for the buck with that. We'd have to get multiple gazebos built. And so with that, you're talking about having them built, which is a, not only a cost factor, but is also a time factor to have those built and put in place, in which we would have to have the county inspector to come to inspect them to make sure we have them in the right location and make sure that it is prudent to place them where we would like to place them. So that's a preliminary report that we've gotten from the operations department in reference to gazebos and tents. Tents are definitely out under the conditions of hurricane season right now.
I appreciate all the research that you've done. Just a couple of reactions. One is, if cost is a barrier, I think we should seriously consider how much it would really cost. You know, I know we have some costs here just more broadly, right? Thinking creatively, and that this would be a thing that I think would be a good use of our money. In terms of the tents, I, I saw these pictures at UNC of these giant tents where they were having classes. I understand that those were set up earlier, but I'm just, I know, the, the idea that we may have a hurricane at some point in the next few months. I, I find that, I, I find it curious that UNC was able to do that presumably for their fall semester, which overlaps with the next few months. You know, presumably, they still have to follow Orange County Fire Code. So I would encourage us to go back and ask more about that. So I would encourage us to go back and ask more about that, or I'm happy to.
Mr. Atherton? You're on mute.
Yeah, I'm going to echo what Sarah said. I, you know, the tents, I think we need to go back and push a little. I do know that the difference, just from a side note, is they're different fire marshals. But I think we should go back and challenge. Hurricane is not something that arrives overnight. We can easily take it down if needed. I think if we need escalation to the county to discuss this, we should because it is something that definitely will be a huge, you know, favor in the sense of having the protection, having the outside air. Business feedback, I've heard as well about how much safer it makes that environment to students and our staff having that space. So I'm in support as well as me making phone calls if needed too. I just, I do not think we should just accept that answer.
Agreed. Anyone else have anything to add? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you all for your time. If there are no further questions, I would like to turn the presentation over to Dr. Chris Gammon.
Thank you, Ms. Pitts, and good evening. In an effort to ensure professional development is more targeted and job embedded, the district leadership team has been compelled to go directly to our teachers in an ongoing feedback loop to discover what's working and where we can improve now that we are a few weeks into the Plan C remote learning experience. This coupled with ongoing communication with students and families will be paramount to our success as we navigate remote and hybrid learning experiences under Plan C and Plan B. Each Friday for the first four weeks of school, a survey has been shared with Orange County Schools' teachers to better understand how prepared they feel they are to teach their curriculum remotely, to inquire about any specific professional development needs they have, and to simply provide a consistent opportunity for teachers to provide qualitative feedback. These surveys will continue bi-weekly for the remainder of the first nine weeks. From this initial feedback, informal observations and weekly administrator communication, our district leadership team identified a few methods to quickly respond to staff needs as well as devise a few longer-term strategies to maximize our stakeholder engagement while focusing on equity, climate and culture. One method to ensure rapid response is utilizing our district facilitator team to turn feedback around from these surveys into frequently asked questions, slide presentations that we're able to share back with teachers and administrators each week. For example, the initial surveys found staff seeking information and support in a variety of areas, including tech support for families, tech issues and troubleshooting with teacher and student machines, guidance with administering assessments remotely, grading and future professional development needs such as Canvas and Zoom. Coupled with quick digital responses for feedback, we also recognize the value of design thinking to ensure efficient participatory problem solving that does not exhaust time and resources from our school-based personnel as they are working tirelessly to navigate synchronous and asynchronous learning. Recently, our facilitator team used one form of design thinking by conducting breakout sessions with our principals, using digital sorting tools to quickly identify the most critical professional development needs for our district and school teams to target. From this, we were able to go back as a curriculum and instruction team in conjunction with our digital learning coaches at the school level in a rapid fashion to devise optional Canvas support sessions, CSOL training and remote learning tool best practices for Friday professional development in the month of September. As noted previously, a couple of longer-term systematic approaches to professional development will come via the Orange County Schools Coaching Collaborative and grade-level teacher-focused groups. Over the years, the Orange County Schools Coaching Collaborative has transformed alongside evolving district goals. It has involved staff from various roles and disciplines. For the 2020-21 school year, the Coaching Collaborative will be an effort to streamline professional development. The goals of the Coaching Collaborative are to lessen the amount of time teachers spend in large professional development settings on Fridays, to increase the amount of time teachers have to plan core and small group instruction, and to maximize transfer and application of new learning by embedding professional development into their weekly professional learning communities, which are grade-level or same-content meetings where teachers review data, plan and share best practices together within their schools. Next slide, please. As we refine our approach to remote learning and plan for a potential shift to hybrid learning in Plan B, we do recognize how critically important it will be to continue investigating the most effective synchronous and asynchronous learning experiences for students and teachers as well as how to best support all learners through our multi-tiered system of support. To do so, we identified another feedback source, as mentioned, in the form of teacher-focused groups. These groups have been formed and will begin meeting in the coming days. Focus groups have been designed to meet the targeted needs of varying grade levels. For example, kindergarten teacher representatives from across all seven elementary schools will come together virtually over the course of multiple short sessions to dive deeper into their collective experiences and to problem solve by assessing what we are currently doing for tiered support for students during remote learning and where we will need to evolve. Questions that will lead our work include, but are certainly not limited to, what is our why, our rationale for decisions? What is a functional timeline for professional development as we navigate throughout the school year? And what are potential questions our staff, students, families and community may pose? At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Connie Kremmons. She will share additional information regarding special education in our separate settings moving forward. And then we will wrap back on any questions that you may have. So Ms. Kremmons.
Good evening again, Board and Community. I just wanted to say tonight that we still, as we move into Plan B, the goal is to still have our special education students who are in the separate settings attend each week and not alternate between an A and B group. This is essential for the continuity because of the needs of this unique group of learners. I am committed, as well as my team is committed, to making this happen in as safe a means for our students and families. There are certainly other students who receive special education services that on a case-by-case basis, we will need to consider their unique needs in light of the circumstances to make sure that their needs are being met in these times. Dr. Gammon, are we moving to Ms. Cobb or are we taking questions now?
I believe we'll shift to Ms. Cobb and then we'll.
Good evening, Board. As part of the work we are doing in order to support students, we have created a virtual code of conduct and we have linked it in here for your review. And this was created in an effort to provide resources for staff around supporting students who may, in the virtual learning situation that we're in, these students may need some extra support. And this virtual code has come completely out of the new code of conduct, character and support that was developed, and it is restorative in nature. Next, we will punt to Dr. Dawson to review the curricular planning for the Virtual Academy.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Cobb. And we will talk about this a little bit more a couple of slides later. But as we know, Plan B will require our students to be in hybrid. So we will be taking a look at what this will mean for our instruction and the way we provide access to instruction when students are in our Virtual Academy. And that fact that our teachers will be teaching our students in person as well as students remote. And then, so we're taking a look at what will that mean for staffing for our Virtual Academies. And we will reassess, because we do have some initial information from prior to the start of school, when families shared with us at that time what their interest was in being in person or staying virtual. So once we reassess that, we'll take a look at our student breakout and then what will that mean for our curricular planning with the live streaming instruction, asynchronous work, synchronous work, and the impact of teachers having to cover multiple layers of where their students are. So we will be reviewing that as well as taking a look at, you know, how our students will be accessing our online curriculum. So I will wait until the next slide to talk a little bit more about the Virtual Academy aspect and what we're doing to prepare for Plan B there. Are there any questions?
Mr. Atherton and then Ms. Smiley?
Yeah, so how are we preparing for on support and remote support for students that are going through tough times, right? There are significantly higher stress levels on students for many, many reasons. What's the thought under Plan B where we have students that are remote and, you know, onsite? And, you know, how are we going to manage that where, you know, a student may just have a rough day and need to go talk to somebody immediately, right, during that day versus them being remote or having to wait or set up an appointment? Have y'all had any discussions about how we can manage that? Do we need additional staff to cover that or what are y'all's thoughts around that?
There we go. So we have staff now that are handling that, Mr. Atherton. And like you said, we may have, when we go into Plan B, we will have some students that'll be virtual, some that'll be face-to-face. So presently, we have a way that students can log in and say, I need to speak with someone. Students support staff, receives that, they are contacting students immediately. And we will still have staff that may be in the building that will be able to be saved. We also have our social-emotional learning resources that are still on and that will continue. And we still also have our school-based mental health that is going on and will continue as well. And that is virtual as well as our community resources. And we are in conversations and investigating what else we need to bring in to support students in our schools as we move from Plan C to Plan B.
So for Plan B, there will be a live person at the school that they can go speak with versus online?
Our student support services staff.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Should I go next?
Yes, go ahead. I'm sorry, Ms. Smiley. Go ahead.
Cool. Okay, so just a point and then a question. So this revisiting parent information about being in person versus virtual, I just, the point I want to make is that we should revisit the kinds of, all the questions we got in July as parents were trying to make that decision. As a parent, I think, I think for parents, what we need to expect is that many parents are going to need access to all of that information in order to decide the right decision for their family, right? So they're going to want to know all these questions about like, what happens if the teacher is quarantined? You know, all of these things. So just to have that ready before you ask parents which option. The question is whether we are reconsidering the particular model of Plan B that we decided on in early July or whenever that was. So the idea of all children going back every other week with the Fridays being more intensive interventions?
Yeah. So, Mrs. Smiley, if I may, I, well, actually, was that question posed to Kremmons or?
Oh, no, broadly. So not necessarily about exceptional children, but as a system, I think, because I've shared this with you, Dr. Felder, I think some of our students, our younger students are experiencing more challenges than our older students. And I have an opinion that I think should revisit our Plan B model, but I am just posing it as a question. Are we reconsidering?
Well, actually, you are a bit ahead of us because we put a piece of attention. You nailed it. So we'll be able to zoom through that slide. That's exactly what we're doing. So we are revisiting, we know more now than we did before, the lessons learned. We'd be foolish not to go rethink, and that's exactly what we're doing. How kids moved into an A or B group, should we do alternating week? If it's alternating week, or do we do alternating weeks? Is it alternating days? So we are revisiting every single thing. To your point about parents getting an opportunity to provide, to regather that information that we gathered in July, that's exactly what we plan to do. But provide them with the information that we now know that we didn't know then so that they can make informed decisions. So that's the work that we are doing right now. Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Hauser?
So I'm not exactly sure how to ask this question. I'm trying to reconcile what I'm seeing here with what I'm hearing from parents and teachers. And it's two levels. One is that the older students, the teachers seem to be somewhat concerned about engagement. It's one thing to say we're teaching them. It's another thing to say they're engaging. You know, are they just showing up, getting their, you know, taking attendance and then leaving? So there's that concern and how do we, how are we managing that? At the lower levels, I'm hearing a concern about pairing the virtual, the online work with paper, that some of the students really would like, or parent, I don't know if the student parent or both, would really like to have some paper documents so that, I mean, I have mine here, you know, so you could write things down while you're working. But I think it's also the lessons. And I, and I think there's some, if I'm hearing this right, there's maybe some inconsistency across our schools as to what they're doing or what they feel able to do. And there might even be a question about cost. So I just was curious, what are the things that were supplement to the curriculum to make it work for our students?
So I'm actually going to ask Dr. Gammon to come back on because we are addressing some of those concerns. Because we have heard from some of our families saying that, you know what, for some of our children, especially our younger children, we need something more tangible, you know, and actual like workbooks and texts, you know, where it's more of that kind of work. So Dr. Gammon, would you mind hopping back on? Yeah, thank you.
Sure. Yeah, so we've had some feedback that we've received from parents as well as through communication following some of our recent board meetings, which have helped kind of guide our decision-making around the paperwork, as you're noting, Ms. Hauser. We have looked at our core curriculum, especially at the K-5 level in math, where we've investigated purchasing our Bridges workbooks. So this, basically, they would pair with the online curriculum that is already in use by students. That's something that we have sought after to get, so that we could get that into the hands of our students. Another method is we definitely worked with our principals around just some questions that came through around iPad use, for example, for our lowest-grade students, especially our kindergartners. So we did some problem solving around that as far as tech support, and we worked with principals in that space. We've also looked at, as was mentioned before, at some certain programs such as Math Seeds or Reading Eggs that we had some success with during our summer intensive program. That feedback came through to us, and that's something that we immediately looked at. And Ms. Kremmons, you know, worked a lot with that as well to try to see if we could get licenses of those into the hands of our students. So we're definitely taking that feedback and input. We certainly value it. And anytime it can be shared in any forum, it's something that we can take back to our team and devise a plan around. So thank you.
Okay, so I would like to propose a recommendation, given the current time and realizing that the Metrics Monitoring Task Force will need to present, and we have with us representative from the Department of Health. Would it be okay to?
Would it be okay to pause this presentation, shift to the Metrics Monitoring Task Force's update? And then, if we have time, come back. If we don't, staff can put detailed notes to the remaining slides and share those with the board. Would that be an okay thing to do?
I think that we need to do that in the interest of time because we still have lots of agenda items, including policies that are important to pass. So, I appreciate that suggestion, Dr. Felder.
Okay, thank you so much, Mrs. McKenzie. So, with that, we're going to shift gears. And Mr. Johnson, we are going to turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Felder.
You're welcome.
And Connie, if you don't, Ms. Krimmons, if you don't mind, pull up our PowerPoint?
Yes, give me just a minute or two and I should have it up and ready to go.
All right, thank you. Well, we'll, we'll go ahead and begin. Good evening, Board Chair McKenzie, Vice Chair Stevens, School Board members, and Superintendent Dr. Felder. I have with me tonight Rebecca Crawford. She is a Deputy Area Commander at the Orange County Health Department. The purpose of this board item is to give the board and the community a Metrics Task Force update. In our original timeline as a task force, today, September 14th, the Metrics Task Force was supposed to bring a recommendation forward in terms of moving from Plan C to Plan B for the second nine weeks. Approximately two weeks ago, it was decided that we will wait until September 28th to make our first recommendation. We wanted to wait until the 28th because of the Labor Day holiday. As you know, holidays are a factor that we must take into consideration when looking at the metrics and returning to school. We know that in this country, our national holidays have been occasions which we have seen some large gatherings. July 4th and Memorial Day come to mind when I think of large gatherings. The administration thought it would be prudent to go two to four weeks after Labor Day to see what the metrics will look like. Also, you will not see in this presentation the representation of ZIP codes. ZIP codes are not a part of the metrics measurement and the task force is not charged with considering ZIP codes when looking at the metrics. The task force at our last meeting did look at ZIP code information for sharing and information purposes, but not for the purpose of making a decision. We looked at ZIP code information because we had a task force member to request information around ZIP codes. One thing that the Health Department has hammered home with me has been we are a small community and county and that we have members of the community that travel throughout the county regardless of their ZIP code, which could play into the community spread of COVID. So, in front of you, you have a slide that's called "Our Charge Statement." I'm not going to read this charge statement to you, but I will highlight a few points. There are four metrics that Orange County Schools and the task force is monitoring in collaboration with the Orange County Health Department. One is the daily case count, another is the cumulative case count, the trends in types of COVID-like illnesses, and the percent of positive tests. The task force will take other factors into consideration when making recommendations to the board, such as holidays, which I just mentioned, will be watching for any increase related to Labor Day celebrations. Also, we will take into consideration feedback from Orange County Schools' families and staff. And as Dr. Felder noted earlier, we are in the process of working on a survey for parents and staff. With that said, is our charge as a task force is to look at the data and the data only. This charge also highlights that the task force is a recommending body and that the ultimate decision to move from Plan C to Plan B is up to the Orange County School Board. At this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Crawford to go over the metrics and to give an update on the data.
Thanks so much, Jason. Next slide, please. So, we're going to jump into our first week four update. Tonight, we'll review our data from August 3rd through September 7th, which is our most recent full week of data. Next slide, please. Just as a reminder, we created these metrics based on those that are used by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services in order to help us make those data-driven recommendations that you requested. These are updated and shared almost weekly by Governor Cooper and the Secretary of the Department of Health and Human Services, Dr. Mandy Cohen. We'll use Orange County-specific data for three of the metrics and we'll use UNC hospital system-wide data for the last. The Health Department recommends that all four metrics should be moving in the desired direction before the task force makes a recommendation for moving towards a different plan for reopening. Next slide, please. We recommend reviewing the data in four-week periods since, according to the CDC, the average incubation period for COVID-19 is 14 days. Four weeks gives us two incubation periods, essentially to monitor spread of the virus and the resulting disease. You can access our metrics on the link in this website or on the link on the slide also. Next slide, please. Our first metric, COVID-like illness, or CLI for short, is an important metric to follow because this tells us the number of individuals that are sick enough to go to a hospital emergency department with symptoms that match those of COVID-19. These numbers are relatively low right now because most residents in Orange County are going to their primary care providers rather than to the emergency department with symptoms. We anticipate this will increase with the onset of flu season and the metric will become even more important in determining the capacity in our hospitals for treating patients with COVID-19. Our goal would be for doctors' offices and hospitals to not have as many cases of flu in order to have the staffing, supplies, and beds available for COVID patients. Encouraging flu shots will be a great way to keep these numbers low. As you can see with our green downward trending arrow on this slide, we want the numbers of CLI at emergency departments to decrease for four consecutive weeks in order to recommend moving to the next plan. Next slide, please. We can see a downward trend in this metric in our most recent four weeks of data, which is great and is represented by that green line. We've been closely watching these numbers as flu season has already started, but so far, we haven't seen an increase. We can attribute some of that, we think, to mask usage and waiting and, you know, washing your hands, all those things. So, I'm really hopeful that this one will stay low. Next slide, please. Lab confirmed cases are our next metric. The number of new cases identified per week is an important metric because this shows us the level of community spread in Orange County. The Orange County Health Department has the ability to case investigate and contact trace at our current level of staffing when we have fewer than 125 cases per week. This is important because case investigation and contact tracing allows us to potentially reduce the spread of the virus by notifying any close contacts identified by the positive case within 24 to 48 hours of the Health Department notification of a case. We do have the ability to scale up staffing with increased cases, but that takes time. Again, we want to see a green downward trending arrow for four consecutive weeks in order to recommend moving to the next plan. Next slide, please. We've seen a lot of fluctuation in our number of positive cases during this four-week period. We know the positive cases in the UNC student population contributed to a large portion of the increase in mid-August, but have since seen a decrease back to our pre-August 17th level. As you know, we want to see that sustained decreases in cases over the four-week period, even after a national holiday. So, we'll watch closely in that two to four-week period after Labor Day, like Jason suggested, which was this past Monday. At this time, we do not have a downward trend in the number of cases for four consecutive weeks, hence the red line. Next slide, please. Our third metric is percent positive of total tests conducted for Orange County residents. The percent positive of total tests tells us the rate of infection in our community, only of those tested. North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, using World Health Organization guidelines, has shared that the percent positive rate should be below 5% for at least 14 days for our state in order to consider moving forward with reopening. Just as in our other metrics, we would like to see a green downward trending line for four consecutive weeks before recommend moving to the next phase of reopening. Next slide, please. As you can see, our percent positive of total test has also fluctuated wildly in mid-August, just like our number of cases, most likely related to both UNC students and increased testing as we've looked to understand the level of community spread related to those students. Please keep in mind that we've had other periods of percent positive of total tests higher than 5% during the pandemic that were unrelated to UNC students, however. I really like seeing this downward trend with the green line, so let's all continue to wear our masks, wait 6 feet apart, and wash our hands to keep this number below 5%. Next slide, please. Our final metric is the weekly number of COVID-19 hospitalizations in the UNC system. This is a hugely important metric and helps us understand the capacity of our hospitals to care for those with the most severe illness with COVID-19. The UNC main campus is located on Orange County and although there are multiple UNC affiliated hospitals throughout North Carolina, they are all sending their most severe cases to UNC main hospital for treatment. An upward trend in hospitalizations again shows widespread community transmission, not only in Orange County, but the other counties around us that will send patients to Orange County. So, we want that green downward trending line for four consecutive weeks here also. Next slide. Our COVID-19 hospitalizations in the UNC system hospitals are fairly level, hence our yellow line, but I still think that that's great news. As long as we have it level, then we know that the hospital is in a place where they can maintain capacity. And then, Jason, I think you were going to talk about this next slide.
That's correct. Ms. Krimmons, do you mind if, if you allow me to share my screen real quick? Because I don't like the way that looks.
Sure thing. Give me just a second.
Can you see my screen?
No.
Joe, what, what did I need to do to share my screen? Ms. Krimmons, you can just put it back up. We'll talk from that.
Okay.
So, please note on this slide, we have the full metrics, how they're trending over the last few weeks in Orange County. You would note that COVID-like illnesses have seen a slight decrease over three weeks, which is making progress. Please also note that our percent positive tests have decreased over the last three weeks. And over the past two weeks, it has been under 5%. It is also making progress. Our case counts in the county have seen a one-week decrease and is also making progress. And finally, hospitalizations have been stable over the past four weeks and this threshold, threshold has been met for now. Next slide, Connie? So, as, so as mentioned earlier in, in the presentation, we will be at a next, at a next board meeting on September 28th. We will be bringing a recommendation from the task force to the board. At this time, we're open for questions.
Ms. Smiley?
Just a question on that last slide, which I really appreciate the way that that's all laid out so clearly with the thresholds and where we stand right now. But specifically, one, at least one of those that were the threshold, I think it was the percent positives, it said a downward trend. I think that that one at least is, my understanding was it's a downward trend and it is below 5% for at least 14 days. Is that, am I, is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, so I don't know if there, if, if, uh, if CLI also has something like that, like there is a threshold and a downward trend, but if there, I would recommend putting that in here so that that is, is clear. Because I don't think we have, you know, 4% positive, it's, if it's below 5% and, I mean, maybe, maybe it's in progress. I don't know. I guess it's a little open to interpretation, but I just, I think that would make it clearer.
Okay, thank you. Point taken.
Mr. Atherton?
So, thanks to the committee. I know it's been a lot of work. I know there's lots of discussions and information being given to everybody to try to understand the complexity of this. The question I have is, you know, one of the metrics for the UNC hospital system-wide hospitalization, talked about four weeks of consecutive downward trend. It's, it's flat right now and you have two more weeks. There's not a physical way to have a downward trend or a fully downward trend. Is the, the group going to use this as a yes/no at that point?
Are you, are you asking in terms of yes/no vote?
Well, I mean, if, if all of these must be true, I mean, I, I guess I'm letting the secret out of the bag. There's no way for the, for the last one there to actually be true, being that it's flat now and there's only two weeks left.
Yeah, so, so the task force will vote based off the data that we show them. Rebecca, correct me if I'm wrong, when we vote, like all four of them doesn't have to be?
We, we did recommend that all four would be in either downward or in the case of hospitalizations, we said a level or downward trend. So, that would be our recommendation. I think if we have another two weeks where it maintains stability, again, that says that the hospitals have capacity and we would look at the four-week period, including the most recent two weeks that are included in this assessment plus the additional two weeks.
Okay, thank you for that clarity.
Ms. Hauser and Ms. Smiley?
I, I have a few questions. I, I, some of them are really just in terms of statistical representation. And, and I, I understand the, um, but I would, but isn't it realistic to assume that community spread is reflected in our numbers? So, if we're the 27278 ZIP code, our people are moving around all the time. So, wouldn't the numbers for our community be represented in our ZIP code? So, I, I just have a question that, you know, so, so there's that. There's this kind of broader concern that we're a rural school district, or largely rural school district. And, and there's a kind of a broader concern that our numbers will be distorted if we throw UNC students and Chapel Hill-Carboro numbers. So, I don't know how we factor that. And, and even if we, you know, the board has to make the decision, but it'll be really interesting to see side by side what happened. What's the county-wide number look like? And then, what is the numbers, what do the numbers look like if you pull out Chapel Hill and Carboro? The, the third thing is with the hospitals, you know, if we're going to use these, I, I, I didn't, I thought we were looking at hospital capacity. I didn't think we were looking at hospitalizations. But if I'm looking at the UNC hospital system, especially in Chapel Hill, but statewide, I'm not sure how that affects us because there's so many people going into that hospital. For us, you know, we have a small hospital right in town. Many of our people go to Duke, you know, so I'm not sure what the hospitalization is telling us. I thought our goal was hospital capacity to make sure if there was a problem, there was capacity. So, so, so again, I don't know how ED visits system-wide, got into the methodology. I'd be curious. And I would be interested in, in saying, when we get our numbers to evaluate, is there a way for us to side by side look at Orange County as a whole and then Orange County without Chapel Hill-Carboro?
Uh, so honestly, we at the Health Department really feel that Orange County as a whole is what we should be looking at, that really there's not a wall that exists between northern Orange and southern Orange. And just because this most recent spike in positive cases was related to UNC students, we've seen other spikes throughout this entire pandemic in the northern part of the county and the western and the eastern. It really does travel, which goes to your point of community. It really does travel, which goes to your point of community spread, that community spread does exist. Our residents don't stay in Orange County. They go outside of our county into the other neighboring counties, either for work or for play, restaurant usage, things like that. So we do have, in our opinion, we do have to look at the entire county as opposed to specific ZIP codes or specific sections of the county. In terms of your question for the hospital, that's a great question. We do understand that the Hillsborough Hospital is right here in Hillsborough. They do not have any COVID cases. The COVID cases are sent to Chapel Hill, to the main hospital. And so, I mean, that doesn't mean they're not going to see any, but really they're going to go to Chapel Hill. And so we have residents from all over the county that are going not just to UNC Chapel Hill, but to your point also to Duke. It has to be that regional approach. The numbers that we have access to readily are to the UNC system. But because we know that UNC main hospital is receiving patients, COVID patients, from Chatham County, from Alamance County, from Johnston County, Wayne County, we know that that does add to the capacity, like you mentioned, for our hospital system and how much can they take? So in our discussions with UNC Health, it's the best way to measure this while also staying level with how the state is measuring is number of COVID hospitalizations. Because they are able to ebb and flow with their routine surgeries and routine appointments based on the number of COVID cases that they have within their system. It doesn't mean that we don't look at these other factors too, but in terms of the four metrics that we created for this specific purpose, it was really to match statewide numbers so that we can really benchmark against other best practices and other numbers within the state. I hope that answers your questions.
Kinda.
Feel free to send me an email and I can follow up to make sure I can answer them.
Are there any other questions for the board, from the board? Ms. Smiley?
I'm curious about a couple of things. One is, I don't think we've discussed yet what would be the metrics for closing down, again, if there were a surge after a holiday or something like that while we were in Plan B? And I'm curious, this may be more for Mr. Johnson, you know, will we be having that discussion and when? And then the other is, I saw in some of the charts, it said, you know, the most recent two weeks, it may not include all of the test results. And so how do you think about that in terms of how we should be interpreting the data? And I guess related, are we seeing good turnaround time right now for testing?
Jason, do you want to take the first question and then I'll take the follow-up?
Yeah, so I'm not sure if we will be looking at metrics for closing that. What we would do in conjunction with the Operations Department. And that's a much further discussion. So we'll have to get back to you on this, Ms. Smiley.
Worries, I didn't think you had an answer yet. I just think we should know what they are until people.
And going back to your question around turnaround time and then data for missing tests, I definitely really like to look at a completely different book. We're having data from tests that are starting to come in from last week's testing event, but we don't have the full gamut. And the majority of our testing sites are able to turn around in an average of 48 hours, 72 hours. But we also know that there's, on either side, there is a window and sometimes it can take up to get test results too.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Johnson and Ms. Crawford. Really appreciate it. So if that concludes our metrics monitoring discussion, I wanted to propose to the board with Ms. Routh's blessing, she said that we could add our budget discussion to especially called meeting that will be needed for hotspots. And I'm wondering if we could skip over that and move to the resolution and the policy updates? Because I know that the policy updates need to happen tonight and there are lots of people here listening for the resolution. So what's the pleasure of the board with that?
I move that we do what Ms. McKenzie suggested and that we move to the resolution and the policy updates.
Second. A motion from Ms. Doyle and a second from Ms. Smiley. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, my dog is howling in the background. I apologize, everyone. I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all so much. We will pause. We will skip over our budget conversation this evening and move straight to our resolution tonight. Ms. Stevens has been kind enough to offer to read that for us to begin the conversation.
All right. Resolution for the boards. Make sure my mic is on. Yes, it is. Resolution for the boards, next steps towards equity and education in Orange County schools. Whereas, Orange County Schools acknowledges persistent racial intolerance, inequities and academic disparities in our district as defined by Policy 1030. And whereas, Policy 1030 states that Orange County Schools will take active measures to develop and promote a culture of high expectations for all students, identify and eliminate inequities in excess to opportunities, continuously raise the level of achievement for all students while eliminating academic disparities, ensure that personal characteristics, real or perceived, will not predict any individual's educational outcomes, recognize and aggressively address opportunity gaps, actively recruit, support and retain a diverse workforce, actively train and support all administrators, teachers and staff in implementing this policy, including creating culturally affirming and relevant classrooms in schools, engage with student, staff, parents, guardians and the entire community to build and sustain a culture of, tongue tied, emblematic of the ideals of this equity policy. Equitably allocate resources to accomplish these goals. And whereas, we acknowledge that students, families and staff have always felt, have not, that was an awful mistake. Staff have not always felt safe speaking out about race-related issues and racially charged incidents in OCS. And whereas, we must continue to place value on building a culture dedicated to truth and respect for each person's lived experience. And whereas, the COVID-19 pandemic is also impacting families in disparate ways along lines of race and income. And this could amplify existing educational disparities and put at risk our forward momentum as a district with a named commitment to equity and education. Now therefore, we, the Orange County Board of Education, resolve to do the following during the 2020-2021 school year. As a body, attend racial equity training to work through how we govern in a district that has disparate educational outcomes along the lines of race and socioeconomic status and purposefully work together to decrease achievement and opportunity gaps. Continue to evaluate the effectiveness of remote hybrid in-person learning with an equity lens and direct staff to take action to eliminate inequities, in excess, experience and outcomes. To ensure that the district creates a yearly equity plan. Ensure that an overarching equity focus is integrated into the district's next strategic plan, naming actionable steps to work towards changing disparate outcomes and experiences in the school district and including performance metrics to evaluate progress. Work through the board's Community Engagement Committee to identify and address gaps in the board's communication as a governing body with various stakeholder groups such as Latinx, Spanish-speaking families and Black and Indigenous families, and reengage with the district's Equity Task Force in their advisory capacity to the board. Begin a full equity audit of the board's policy manual. Begin a full equity review of the district resource allocation. Provide district-wide equity training on implicit bias, culturally responsive teaching strategies and effective communication and family engagement. Hereby declare Juneteenth a paid holiday in Orange County schools. Review the names of buildings in our district to examine their origin and compliance with Policy 1030. Ensure that OCS is continuing to take steps to practice multicultural and culturally responsive pedagogy and implement curricula that include an accurate representation of perspectives. Analyze access barriers to programs and opportunities within OCS that have a disproportionate representation of students along racial or socioeconomic lines and determine how the board can support equitable access to these opportunities. Create and support a task force in the district to assess school discipline that will provide feedback to the Board of Education, including recommendations about the in-use, about the use of in-school and out-of-school suspensions, referrals to justice programs and the use of school resource officers as requested by students and community members. Recognize the phrase "Black Lives Matter" not as a partisan or political statement, but as an affirmation of the inherent value of the lives of our Black students, staff and community members, and affirm that Black Lives Matter. Adopted 14th day of September 2020 by voter of the Orange County Board of Education, Hillary McKenzie Chair, Monique Felder Superintendent.
Thank you so much for reading that, Ms. Stevens.
Thank you.
I would like to open this up for discussion.
Well, I will be the first to say that I believe that this is what good government should do, is to recognize that everyone is not the same and that we're going to make positive steps in the right direction so that we can have best practices in OCS.
Okay, Ms. Stevens. Mr. Atherton?
So first, I'd like to say that I support the resolution and do believe we need to take lots of the actions listed and more. But I want to say also, I'm very disappointed in the manner that it comes before the full board. When we talk about equity and the leadership and equity, we often talk about how important it is to have inclusion, hearing all the voices, all the stakeholders, removing barriers. This board who's very passionate about equity, we should have had a meaningful conversation, listening to our Equity Task Force, our Equity students and organizations, and giving the opportunity for our community to listen, provide input, and the board, new board that is, to hear each other's thoughts and ideas as a governing body. Focusing on how we support our community. We did not have a full board conversation part of this resolution, and I think we can do better by example and make this list much stronger and have more specific items as well. Thank you.
Well, I'll just say that I'm surprised to hear you say that, Mr. Atherton, since I called you yesterday and you said that you supported the actions on the board. And many of the items on this resolution are things that are named in a policy that our board collectively passed. And most of the things are items that we've discussed in specific committee meetings. And I sent this resolution to the entire board about 10 days ago to provide time for specific feedback before it was on the public agenda. So I apologize to you if you felt like that was not enough of an opportunity to collaborate on these issues. Most of these things will come back before the board as individual items if it does pass this evening. So hopefully we can meet your expectations moving forward.
Yeah, my main point was, you know, we have a lot of new people on the board with lots of great ideas. And we did have our policy, well, not our policy meeting, but our outreach meeting that was excellent. And there were lots of ideas. And I feel like something like this, coming together and having the conversation as a group, is much more effective than me calling you or me calling another board member and not sharing those in between. But I do appreciate you sharing it before. I did give you my feedback. And like I said, I am supportive of the resolution. I would have just preferred a conversation with the full board before.
Anyone else? Smiley?
I just want to say that one of the things I remember so vividly from when we first passed the equity policy and from our later conversation with the Equity Task Force is the way that they charged us. Please don't let this just be words on a piece of paper. And what I really appreciate about this resolution is that it names the things that we said and the new context that we are in right now, and then names some specific actions that we're going to take this year that I think are well-aligned to the board's role. And so I, for one, am really pleased with this list. And I hope that this kind of action helps us continue to make this more than just words on paper.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Ms. Doyle and then Ms. Moore? Ms. Doyle and then Ms. Moore? Ms. Moore, I'll call on you first and then we'll go back to Ms. Doyle.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to say, I think this type of equity resolution can develop us with the equity lens and mindset. And using an equity lens, we can all actively work together toward the creation of practices, policies and structures specific to our school system and our community. So thank you for putting this together for us, Ms. McKenzie.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Ms. Doyle, if you are able to hear us, I know that you are hoping to say something.
There you go.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. I am so excited to see this resolution. I support it with passion and conviction. I would like to repeat what I hear frequently, which is that members of our community, particularly people of color, do not always feel safe speaking out about racism in our schools and community. And I appreciate the specific actions that are incorporated in this resolution, as Smiley spoke to that. I appreciate Vice Chair Stevens for reading this strong resolution and for her years of service and leadership and dedication to our students throughout the district. I appreciate Chair McKenzie's favor of love and her commitment to supporting our Black and Indigenous people and helping our school community in writing this resolution. Our community as a whole bears the scars of the legacy of racism as well as fashion today. Black students in our school today carry the stress of knowing that if they walk down the street wearing a hoodie armed with candy and a drink, if they encounter a murderous vigilante, he may get off scot-free. Tray Martin's murder and miscarriage of justice was the original grief that created the hashtag Black Lives Matter. Students of color in Orange County schools who walk down Cherton Street honoring Martin Luther King Jr. Day know the Confederate flagger recently walked down our same streets. Students of color sharing personal stories of pain and hope at the NAACP Youth Prayer Vigil at our courthouse steps down the street from our Board of Education suffer the revved engines of their aggressors while they speak and recall images of the KKK on those same steps in recent times. Students today traveling to and from Orange County schools are confronted by a menacing, oversized Confederate flag in this town. Therefore, in this community, with continuous and chronic incidences of injury due to racism, it is imperative for this board to not equivocate, but to affirm that Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Doyle. I want to thank the board for your collaboration with this. I have had so many rich conversations with many of you about different specific measures that this board values. I appreciate feedback and opinions from Dr. Felder, rich conversations with Dr. Keeling, conversations with community members. This has been a... Ms. Hauser, I do see you and I'll call on you. I'm just humbled to work with folks so committed to serving our Black and Brown students. I'm deeply grateful that our district will hopefully honor tonight that Black Lives Matter and really wrap our arms around this, not as a political statement, but as a deep conviction to the humanity and importance and rich value of our Black and Brown students and staff members. Ms. Hauser?
Thank you. I'd like to first say how pleased I am to be on a board and working with a school district whose leadership is completely committed to equity and linking equity to literacy. And it's an honor, honestly. I like the resolution. I think it needs to go further. And that we need, I think, as a board, given that we talk about this all the time, that it's time for ourselves accountable to results. And I think we could just add one step. I also believe that the resolution should recognize that as a district, we have already taken some concerted action and we have committed resources at every level of the organization to these goals. And since we have committed resources, we have a responsibility to see whether they're working or not. So I would like to propose that if no one asks, that recognizes that Orange County Schools has committed resources to equity at every level of the organization, and that I'd like to add a provision that makes us accountable. And that would be, the provision would be to set measurable goals for student growth and achievement that align with our equity goals and regularly measure progress. And I'd start with the 2020 assessments. That's my recommendation. We take it, we take it further, and we hold ourselves accountable.
Thank you, Ms. Hauser.
All right. Madam Chair, will you entertain a motion?
I will.
All right, all right, well, and I would like to say, I certainly hope that this document will be more than words on paper, because that's what my experience has been through many years as a person of color. People say things, but they treat you differently, for sure. So I move that we accept this resolution of next steps towards equity and education in Orange County schools.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Stevens and a second from Mr. Atherton. Ms. Smiley?
Yes, and I'll just say yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes, but I wanted to make one small amendment. I don't know how to do that at this point. Just to expand state of tree.
You can, a motion to amend the original motion, or we can leave it as is. It's up to you, Ms. Doyle.
Well, what I wanted to amend the original motion was that where it says, "Ensure that the district creates a yearly equity plan", just be modified to say, "Create, Implement, and Evaluate a Yearly Equity Plan", so that has a little bit more of those action steps Ms. Stevens mentioned.
Is that a motion to amend the original motion?
Yes, it is.
Is there a second to that? Okay, was that a second from Ms. Stevens?
Yes, it was.
Yes, okay. So now we'll vote on the amendment and then we'll go back to vote on the original. Ms. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle? Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
I would like to make another amendment. So I'd be happy to vote yes on that, but I'd like to make another amendment of adding a number 15, which is establishing measurable goals for achievement for student, for growth and achievement that align with our equity goals. So how do I do that? I don't know how to do that. But I'm happy to say yes for that one, but I'd like to add the other one.
Well, is that, honestly, someone's gonna have to help me walk through all the amendments at this point. Is that a motion to amend the amendment to the amendment to the original motion?
It's a motion to amend the res... To support the First Amendment and add a second one. That's what that is.
Can you please repeat what your amendment would be, Ms. Hauser?
Set measurable goals for student growth and achievement that align with our equity goals and monitor progress regularly.
I believe that would be captured in creating, evaluating, and implementing a yearly equity plan, but we have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we are now voting on adding Ms. Hauser's amendment, and then we'll continue the vote for Ms. Doyle's amendment.
Ms. McKenzie, I think Ms. O'Keefe was trying to step in there.
Ms. O'Keefe.
I apologize. Can folks hear me okay?
Yeah.
Another option, which McKenzie would just be to have folks withdraw prior motions and make a clean motion now to vote on next resolution that can include both of the changes that Ms. Doyle and Ms. Hauser voiced.
And before we do any of that, can I motion to extend this meeting?
Yes.
Because it's after 10. Do we need 15 minutes?
15 minutes.
Okay, motion to extend by 15.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Smiley, a second from Ms. Stevens, please don't amend this. Ms. Doyle, I'm joking.
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
I vote yes, Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley? Ms. Stevens? Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Okay, we've got 15 minutes, folks. So at this point, I will take a motion, since Ms. O'Keefe has put this on the table, to have a clean motion with Ms. Hauser's added number 15 as well as Ms. Doyle's amended number three.
So moved.
Second, but I believe we have to have people back off their original motion.
Yeah, if we can have, if we can have Ms. Stevens withdraw her motion for acceptance of the resolution as initially written.
All right, I withdraw my initial motion.
Ms. Doyle, do you?
Yep, that's correct. Ms. Doyle was the one who made the second.
Ms. Doyle, do you withdraw your original?
Yes.
Amendment? Ms. Hauser, do you withdraw your amendment?
Amended amendment, yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion now to move forward with the resolution as amended?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Stevens and a second from Ms. Hauser. Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, and the resolution unanimously passes. Thank you, everyone, so much for your work on this.
Thank you.
For our next and final, well, actually, we have four comments if we get to it. But for our next action item, we have policy updates. And I would like to suggest that unless there is a specific policy that folks would like to talk through, that we just motion to approve all policies and waive second readings.
I move that motion, Madam Chair.
I will second it.
I have a motion from Ms. Stevens and a second from Ms. Smiley. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, so all of the policies are passed with a waiver of second reading.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Atherton?
So I know we passed them. The only request I have is that we remove all of the old replaces or rescends. There's a bunch of garbage in it. If we could just clean that. That's nothing to do with the content, but with the format, if we could clean that.
Ms. Lee, could you please note Mr. Atherton's request in the minutes? So our final item on the agenda tonight is board reports and comments. I know that we don't have much time, but if anyone has anything passing they would like to share. I will start this in alphabetical order and we will go down the list. Mr. Atherton, do you have anything to share this evening?
I do, but due to the time, I'm going to pass. Thank you.
Ms. Doyle? Ms. Doyle, do you?
Everyone, for the courageous conversation. I just want to thank everyone for the...
Ms. Doyle, unfortunately, I don't think we can hear you. I am going to come back to you. Ms. Hauser?
No, no comment.
Ms. Moore?
No comment.
Ms. Smiley?
I just want to thank all of the teachers and staff and parents out there who have been working so, so, so hard. I see you.
Ms. Stevens?
No comments.
Ms. Doyle, are you back on the line? Do you have any comments that you'd like to share this evening? All right, I don't see her, so I think that she is having connection issues. So with that, I will take a motion for adjournment this evening.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Stevens and a second from Mr. Atherton. Ms. Doyle? It might have been a bad one to start with. Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
I vote yes, Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle, if you can hear us? Well, in any case, that's a quorum of the board, so we are adjourned, everyone. Thank you so much. Thank you, staff. Thank you, board members. Thank you, teachers. Thank you, community. We are so grateful for you. Have a great night, everyone, and we'll see you on the 28th.